Thank you all for being here today for today's city council meeting. I'll entertain a motion to suspend the rules.
I'll second.
By Mr. Lawrence and a second by Mr. Guines. Any discussion? All in favor? It's approved on a four-o vote for the clerk. If the clerk would read the revisions, please.
To the routine agenda, we will add a supplemental docket in the amount of forty-six thousand, nine-hundred-and-forty-two dollars and one cent for insurance premiums.
All right. I'll...
The agenda is amended?
All right. There's a motion by Mr. Lawrence.
I'll second.
To approve the amended agenda, second by Mr. Guines. Any discussion? There being none, all in favor. It's approved on a four-o vote. Thank you. That brings us to the mayor's report. Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. Welcome, everybody. And that concludes my report. Thank you.[65.11][65.11](Laughter).
For those who may have missed it at home, would you repeat your report?
That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't believe we have any departmental reports. That brings us to council reports. Mr. Lawrence in Ward One.
I would just say welcome everybody here. Nice crowd, rainy, bad day, but hey, you still come out to see us. Appreciate y'all coming. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lawrence. Mr. Guines in Ward Two.
Yes, I have just one little topic. I have Mr. Gray here from Hiddingham, 313 Hiddingham. He had some unresolved issues that he wanted to talk about that we still haven't dealt with, with Oscar Renta. So, Mr. Gray, I'm gonna give my time to you.
Yes, sir. What's his name? I'll get him in a minute. Mr. Gray, when you... If you would, sign in. And when you're done, if you'll say your name so the clerk can record it accurately, your first and last name. Thank you, sir.
Gary Gray, 313 Hiddingham Avenue. G-A-R-Y, G-R-A-Y. I was up here last year to discuss an issue with property that I own. Oscar Renta came through and put in a new sewer main. The sewer main did not go anywhere. I discovered it when the sewage started backing up, did some troubleshooting, found out that the new sewer line that was put in was not connected. I was then informed by the project manager to go ahead and have a plumbing company repair that, had that repaired. I was late September, October. Still have not had a resolution to that. Also, when they put in a new sewer line, they destroyed the driveway. The driveway is now dirt. Every time it rains, the water washes out all the mud and stuff. So, it's a really bad sight with potholes and everything else. I have not seen a resolution to that. I called, came up here before. When I came up here before, I was told that I would be contacted with a check. When I was contacted about a check, I was then told I would need to sign a waiver. I asked the person that called me, would that still... Would that still pertain to the driveway? I would get the driveway fixed? And I was told, no. So, I declined the waiver because I'm still seeking some type of resolution for that. And if not, I'm wondering, do I have to take things further? Or what do I have to do?
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Gray. And again, you know, we've been dealing with this a long time. And, you know, the project manager, Mr. Walt Rhodey, gave this, you know, told us what to do. And I was out there to witness that. If we can't come to our own and get this done by on our own, we need to have somebody else do it. If we need a special person to do it, that's fine. If he's overworked and we can't handle it, it may be time to change out our project manager. But a project manager should understand, he should know the process and know the procedures. And when he doesn't know the proper procedures, it makes it doubly whole on people like myself. It makes me look like I don't know what the, you know, I'm lying to this guy. And I don't want to go out there and, you know, at the end of the day, we're the face of our wards and the people we represent. And for a project manager to make the councilman look like he's not telling the truth, it's not good. And so, it's time for the project manager to either put up or shut up. And I'm a little, at this point, I know I'm personally a little disgusted with it because this man been here, you know, a long time. And we've been asking, asking. And we shouldn't have to beg a guy from something that Oscar Renta that went back two, three, four years. We shouldn't have to beg for it. So, that... Mr. Gray, you have anything else you want to add to it?
No. And like I said, I still have not received that reimbursement for installing that sewer line. That was twenty-one hundred and forty dollars. Still have not received that at all, neither. That's all I have.
Okay.
Allow me to speak with Mr. Gray.
Yes, sir. Okay. All right. Well, thank you and for coming and sharing that. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Guines. Thank you, Mr. Gray. Mr. Glavin in Ward Six.
All right. Thank you. Just a couple of things, a couple of people I want to recognize. First, Alan Lane, as always, kind of assisted with some debris removal on Tribe Drive. And there were several calls made to Pelican to remove the waste. And for whatever reason, it was being overlooked. And he took care of it literally the next day on a weekend. So, that was good. Director Bell, for her assistance, there was a Little League baseball team that needed to practice. And she was gracious enough to open up some of the fields at the Biloxi Sports Park. We're now looking to possibly be able to rent those fields on a case-by-case basis and maybe generate some additional income for repairs and other maintenance-related things for outside teams if it's available, if some of those fields are available in the future. That'll be a good thing, too. There's several teams that they're looking for places to practice. And we could recoup, I don't know, five-hundred thousand, two-thousand dollars a month in field rentals. And that'd be a great thing. And then on our tree ordinance, I know last week, we had a special meeting at the end and some discussions incurred. I've received a couple of calls from some interested residents asking if somebody removes specific protected trees and we contribute the money to the mitigation bank, will that same type of tree be replenished? So, if we take a live oak, will we have additional live oaks reforested somewhere? Or will it be a live oak for fifteen palm trees? And Tom, I don't have the answer to that. That'd probably be a little bit more work. Maybe there's something we can come up with. The great thing, though, is that we're moving in the direction to have a mitigation bank to reforest very badly needed areas, wherever they may be. And for us to lead the state in that kind of innovative thinking is a real good thing. And with that, Mr. President, that will conclude my report.
Thank you, Mr. Glavin. Mr. Barrett in Ward Seven.
I also would like to give a shout out to Alan Lane. He helped me out this week on several things. He always does a great job. Also, Mike Costley, this week, several things he took care of that were needed to be taken care of really quick. So, big thanks there. Mike, I talked to you last week about AT&amp;T. Did you ever find anything out about the easements and how far out they're going?
According to our plans, they're working in their easements. And some of those easements go pretty far up into the lot.
Okay. Is there any way that I can get that on that road? Because that road's the only place that I had complaints. Just find out how far the easement is from the edge of the road or the center of the road or whatever, so that I can just, you know, let those people know if they are or aren't within the easement?
I think, as you remember, the plot, the stack of maps was about this thick, very detailed. Let me see if I can find one that's got that.
Just, yeah, just for Riviera View.
Yeah.
If we can find out what, how far the easement is from however we... From the edge of the road or the center of the road or whatever. And that way, I can let them know.
Well, I'll see if I can get that one page brought up here before, while we're in council, so I can give it to you at the end of the day. So, it's not gonna be an easy thing to email to you.
Okay. And then I see we have some progress at the park, so that's a good thing.
All the stuff on order.
Yeah.
Stuff...
I think they started on the pavilion, maybe working on the slab for that this week as well.
The benches have come in, I think.
Good deal.
The... We'll open bids on the playground equipment, I think, next week. Anyways, that's the playground equipment for all five of the playgrounds. And we're all bid. We'll be opening bids on those.
And what about the parking lot?
And the parking lot, where, you know what we're waiting for? We're waiting for it to dry so that we can kill off the weeds and then pave. Horn's standing by, waiting for us to weed, actually to spray those grass.
The last thing is that if there's any way for us to get our public works some type of schedule in the next month or so, because on some of these ditches that have caused problems repeatedly, we're April, it's gonna be a really big rainy season, and don't want to face the issues that we faced last year. And I know that some of that was completely out of our control because of the amount of rain. But some of these easements still are in terrible need of being cleaned out. And we need, you know, we need to do that to protect these property owners.
One of the things we have done in the last month was create a complete ditch inventory of every ditch that we know of in the city and assign them one of, into one of twelve month, monthly segments. And then the work orders will be kicked out month by month. And each of the supervisors will go out. The first step is to inspect the ditch. Then they have to close the work order out, open a new work order if work has to be done on the ditch. In some cases, there's no work needed. But we'll be able to know that, have a record that we saw every ditch.
All right. And other than Jerry, I need to talk to you after the meeting about something. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett. Just one thing. The West Biloxi Master Plan, I know that was done by Neil Schaefer, and the city's got it. It was cleaned up a little bit. And I know we're looking, we'll be looking at bite-sized chunks. And for those not familiar with the West Biloxi Master Plan, this is, I guess, infrastructure, water, sewage, drainage, west of White Avenue, all the way to DeBee's Road, south of the bay. And I know that we've got a lineup financing for some of these projects. And by bite size, it could be eight, nine, ten million-dollar chunks or whatever. Can't do everything at once. I believe it totals almost two-hundred million. We have the human forklift bringing that West Biloxi Master Plan right now as we speak. And the sooner we can get started on that, the better. And the only reason I mention that, on Orleans Drive, we had two, I don't know if, I think it was water lines, it could have been sewage, two breaks yesterday. We had at Martin and Pops Ferry Road Friday night, there was a... So, I know everything's wearing out just because it's aging. So, the sooner we can get started, the better off we'll be. So, thanks for getting that in. And I'll touch base with the administration every once in a while. Mike, did you want to say anything?
I would, just as a visual, ninety-two million dollars of those two-hundred million are listed as priority projects. West Biloxi Master Plan is now, and West Biloxi infrastructure is now the worst infrastructure in the city. We've got a real uphill battle.
I don't know that you have to mention it to residents in West Biloxi. I think they know. What ward is it in? I think they know. And they're reminded of it periodically. It's just that the stuff doesn't last forever. Should have been replaced years and years ago. But we'll get to it, and we've got to be able to afford what we do. So...
While we were sharing congratulations earlier, I would be remiss in not reminding everybody that on Friday evening of last week, when it was right at freezing, we had a huge water line break on Pops Ferry and Martin. And our very vigilant water sewer crew was up to their waist in freezing water, trying to get that turned off. It's not a fun job.
No, it's not. And we don't tend to think a lot about some of our employees till we see them thrown into the breach after working hours. But that's where we are with some of our infrastructure. They did a good job on short notice. That concludes my comments or questions. Thank you very much. It brings us to the public agenda. We'll allot up to forty-five minutes for citizens' comments. Each individual will have up to three minutes to comment. Once you're, once you come forward to speak, if you would, sit down at the desk there, sign in with your name and address. State your name clearly so the council clerk, deputy clerk, can record it accurately. And she'll start the timer, and you're on the three-minute countdown. That being said, is there anybody on my right, your left, that would like to address the council? Anybody on this side of the room? Yes, ma'am. Please come forward, if you would.
This is the first time I've come here or addressed anything. This is... I'm sorry.
Just, you're telling a good friend about a movie you saw. So, forget everybody out there. You're good to go.
But this is to address the concern with the short-term rental. Is that where we're at right now?
That's where we are. And so, you'll be given three minutes once you begin to speak. And again, just state your name clearly so the clerk can record it accurately.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. My name is Amanda Graham, and I am representing Country Living Park off of Old Highway 67 in Biloxi. Recently, we were given a salutation for a short-term rental for not having a license. There was some miscommunication and misunderstanding as far as that was concerned. And I do want to take the proper steps to get a license to obtain that legally. It was brought to my attention that the city of Biloxi no longer wants to honor the short-term rentals, but rather do thirty-day stays of rentals. So, I'm just here to voice my concern as far as that. I'm just kind of mind-blown over the fact that the rules and regulations lie in the amount of days that an individual basically lays their head on a pillow as opposed to the complete and total aspect of the qualifications and requirements of a structure. As far as the park is concerned, I'm not sure if you all are familiar with it, but there is a small section there in the park that is zoned appropriately for the short-term rentals. And so, what we're having an issue with is basically Unit A can be approved for a short-term, and within walking distance of just a few feet, Unit B cannot be approved for a short-term rental. And so, with that being said, another issue that I'm running into is that the council or the city does not want to allow mobile homes to be used as a short-term rental. And from what I understand of that is the quality of a mobile home, the structure itself. However, we do have the funds and resources to bring these mobile homes to whatever standard would be required by the city, new windows, GFIs, things of that nature that you all do deem appropriate for things such as tiny houses or cottages or what have you. So, this property in previous years has been a complete eyesore for the city of Gulfport. And the Homes of Grace did take over this particular property, and it has done a complete one-eighty as far as the appearance and the amount of drug use that was going on at this location. It is very cleaned, very well-maintained. The maintenance and management is up to par.
Ms. Graham, I'm sorry, your time is up.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Graham. Is there anybody else on my right, your left, that would like to address the council? Yes, ma'am.
Can you hear me well enough?
Yes.
Okay. I'm Tracy Wyman, and I'm speaking on behalf of the Tree Committee regarding the proposed revisions to the land development ordinance as it relates to the tree ordinance. The Tree Committee, and we're very excited about some of the changes that are being implemented and for the process that we've gone through with the community development to arrive at many of these changes. However, I just want to reiterate, obviously, we've been in meetings before, some of our key points. So, first of all, the Tree Committee really desires for this document that's being amended, for it's being created, for it to be a meaningful document that is feasible for, to be applied for the city, for the developers, and that it's easy, you know, for everyone to understand. To that end, the Tree Committee supports the removal of water oaks as a protected species. This will drastically reduce the number of trees that are mitigated for. Nevertheless, we do support that revision. The Tree Committee supports the mitigation trust. However, we are very concerned whether the city has the capacity to do all that is promised in the proposed language without securing funds for additional staffing or even technology. I am not suggesting what that is, but I am suggesting that it's perhaps a need. The Tree Committee finds that certain verbiage in the language is inconsistent, and therefore we suggest a few changes to the current verbiage. And I have emailed that to all of you. The reason why we are asking for proposals for the removal of five or more protected trees on single-family home sites to be reviewed through Planning Commission with Tree Committee recommendations is because there was an instance last year where a developer applied for five applications on individual lots. Lot number one approved for entire area of trees on lot to be removed of an unknown quantity. Lot number two approved for seven trees. Only some species were identified. Lot number three approved for ten trees, species not identified. Approved, lot number four approved for eight trees, same. Lot number five approved for ten trees, same. We do not support this lack of accountability. That's what we're saying. From 2019 through 2000 now, 2022, as we've been tracking all of this...
Ms. Wyman, I'm sorry, your time is up.
Thank you, Ms. Wyman. I believe, I assume everybody got your email. I know I got your email. Thank you. Is there anybody else on my right, the left side, your left side of the room? Anybody on my left, your right side of the room? Mr. Gill, good to see you again, Mr. Gill.
Mr. President? My name is Russell Gill. I represent Frank Zhang. It's on the policy agenda as item D. And it has to do with the rezoning application. Let me sign my name real quick. We have just retained an expert witness to help create a record before the council on this zoning request. And that expert is Mr. Lebatard. He's sitting here in the room. But we don't have a written report from him, and we need to get a written report to supplement the record. So, we'd like a continuance to a later date on this final hearing, if that would be okay with the council.
When we move to that item on the agenda, we'll see if there's a motion to table, Mr. Gill. We'll see if he gets to that. We may table, it may not. You may want to continue with your comments. You've got a few minutes left, if you'd like.
Well, again, the purpose is to get a formal written report from our expert. And we'll present that at that time.
Thank you, Mr. Gill. Anybody else on my left, your right? Yes, ma'am. Ms. Campbell.
Hey, Carol Campbell, 3047 Big Lake Road, Vice Chair of the Tree Committee. I'm just reading this last little bit that Tracy didn't get to, 2019 to 2021. Most permit applications for home site construction are for the removal of one to four trees. They are approved by the Community Development Office for a variety of reasons. For example, they're dying, they're hazardous to an existing structure, or they're removed in order to build a new structure, and the Tree Committee is notified. No recommendations from Tree Committee or mitigation are required for these projects. And an added note, in the past, most of these requests were for water oaks. And finally, the Tree Committee supports this process.
Anybody else on my left, your right? Anybody in the back? Last call. All right. That concludes citizens' comments. It moves us to the policy agenda. And our first item is a first reading. If the clerk would read that ordinance, please.
Ordinance to amend the land development ordinance pertaining to short-term rental uses prohibiting short-term rentals within recreational vehicles, mobile manufactured homes.
This is just a first reading. There won't be any vote. I'll entertain a motion. There's a motion by Mr. Guines and a second by Mr. Lawrence. And that's sufficient. Did the clerk get the motion in the second? Thank you. That brings us to item B. If the clerk would read this first reading for this ordinance, please.
Ordinance to approve a zoning map amendment for a parcel of land from its present split zoning district classification of RMH and NB to RMH for a land currently identified as Seventeen Eighteen Pass Road.
I'll entertain a motion by Mr. Guines. Is there a second?
I'll second.
By Mr. Glavin, which is sufficient for this first reading. That brings us to item 4C, which is a second reading. If the clerk would read this item, please.
Ordinance to amend selected sections of the land development ordinance as it relates to the Tree Committee, tree permit, and tree protection.
Thank you. Did I make the motion? All right. And that is a motion. Who made the second? Who did? I respect the council's wishes on whether there's enough support to table this. I know that this was first heard, I think, by the council in October of 2020, and...
No, that was, that's the short-term rental heard in October of 2020.
Maybe I'm confused.
That was Mr. Zhang.
Okay.
It happens to the best of presidents. Don't worry about that, Paul.
Okay. Well, I'm confused for the moment then. All right. So, this is not pertaining to, Mr. Gill, my apologies. Okay. My wife could be right. Maybe I don't listen always. Thank you. Okay. So, my concern again is short-term rent, excuse me, I'm sorry, short-term rentals. This is a tree. I got it. It's a tree. Okay.
Free.
Got short-term rentals on my mind. All right. So, this deals with the mitigation trust and the tree ordinance and the Tree Committee. Thank you very much for the comments earlier. Mr. Creel, you may want to come to the mic. I suspect there may be a few questions. I know that I have a couple, and then I'll turn it over to Mr. Guines. Why wouldn't we mitigate every protected tree, even on residential properties, particularly given the example where some developers may game the system to reduce costs or whatever and apply for permits for individual lots rather than for a number of lots where it would have to go before the Planning Commission? I know that given the individual residential parcels, you have some discretion on that. I know that given the individual residential parcels, you have some discretion on that, I think.
Traditionally, traditionally residential has been exempted from that, but Eric and I were just talking about it. We would have no objection to making that change in the ordinance that even if it's a residential property and the owner wants to remove five or more trees, then we could have a public hearing on that before the Planning Commission. So we do not object to that. Now, we do have some alternative recommendations that we would like to, for the council to consider. I fielded a number of calls about, you know, trying to come up with something to simplify this, and what we've agreed to do, we've agreed to compromise on one of the areas, but we would ask for a compromise on one or the other. You know, the topic of discussion last week seemed to be mostly about single-family subdivisions, and there was some objection to the one-to-one mitigation rate on that. So what we are proposing is that we do away with the table that's proposed in the ordinance, do away with the table. We would compromise and go to two-to-one on subdivisions. We would ask that on the commercial developments that be reduced from three to two, which would mean that across the board, any developer that comes to the city of Biloxi would do two-to-one mitigation on any project regardless. We think this is a fair and reasonable compromise. We think it would work for both sides. If the developer chooses to plant the trees on his own property, then he would bear the cost of paying to have those planted. However, if he chooses to pay into the mitigation bank, then it would be the number of trees required for mitigation times two. So in essence, for every one tree being removed, they would be paying four times that amount to offset the cost of us having to go hire someone to plant those trees on city property somewhere else. I think this is a good and fair compromise for everybody. It simplifies the process, and at two-to-one, we are still requiring double what any of the cities around Biloxi are requiring right now. All of them are requiring one-to-one. We would be requiring two-to-one, so. Any questions?
Did everybody follow that up here? Mr. Barrett, question?
I don't have a question specifically about that. I can support that. Ms. Wyman brought up the, about the developer that had the five individual lots, and that was in my ward, and that was something that I called both of you guys about, that we got a lot of complaints about, and I think that we need to make an addendum. And I know that you said we can, I don't think that we need to punish the individual homeowner for this. I think that the, that we need to amend this to specifically address developers that have more than one lot, and so that they can't just do it, file it individually. If they're doing five or six lots and all the utilities are already there and things, that's still a development, and they should have to follow the rules of a development, not by an individual lot. And so I don't think that they should just be able to go and clear, I mean, there were some, some beautiful trees, and I'm for the rights of the homeowner, but some of those trees didn't have to be moved to build the homes, some very large oak trees that were there did not have to be moved for those homes to be built where they're at. And so I believe, I don't think that the homeowner, that an individual homeowner should be punished because developers are trying to take advantage of the system. I think the amendment should specifically address developers.
Subdivision developers.
Yes. And so they can't go in and buy a chunk of property and build nine houses and then, you know, do their, do, file basically as individual lots. No, that's, that's a development. That's not individual lots.
We have no objection to that.
And so that's, I would like, however that needs to be worded, I would like to make that amendment to this. Other than that, I can, that, I can support it. I do think that we need to move on from this, and then if we see that there's parts of it that aren't working, we can always come back and amend those, you know, and, and amend it and make it right, but I think we need to put something into place, a working system, and then we come back and amend whatever doesn't work well in it.
That's going to require you to make a motion. Question, Mr. Creel. Currently, if I have, let's say, a 16-inch live oak in my backyard, and I want to landscape my backyard and want to remove it entirely, do I need to get a tree permit?
Yes, sir. You have to get a, under the current ordinance, you would have to get a tree permit.
Right, and I would have to mitigate? Would I have to mitigate? No.
If it's on single-family zoning, no.
Exactly. So in my backyard, if I want to remove that tree, I come get a permit.
That's correct.
All right. I get rid of that tree. I don't have to mitigate, and I'm wondering how many residents do that annually and how many trees are lost? At least we know that, hopefully, we know that that resident got a permit, so we know where it used to be, but there's no mitigation. And my thinking is, shouldn't they be required to mitigate like anybody else? I know that's not been the history here in the city, but depending on the market rate of a tree and the size of the tree, they may have to purchase three two-caliper live oak trees, and depending on what the market rate may be, they could be $400, $500, $600, $700. But I'm, I'm thinking, if you're, if we value live oak trees or those other protected trees, every time we're chipping away, we should be getting something in return from whoever's removing the tree, and maybe that's on a two-to-one or three-to-one basis, or currently with what's being proposed, it would hinge on how big the oak tree was. Now, but just to, if you have one of these, and I don't know what they call them, the majestic oaks, would that be the term, I guess? You got a beautiful oak tree, and you're tired of looking at it or raking up acorns, so you have somebody come in and cut that thing down. Maybe it's, you know, the circumference is eight feet or something. I still wouldn't have to mitigate that.
Well, let me, let me answer that question a couple of ways. Number one, just because someone wants to cut down a tree in their yard doesn't mean that they're going to be able to get a permit to do it. I've known Eric to go out to residential properties many times and would tell the owner there's just no legitimate reason for this tree to come down. Just recently, one on Hopkins Boulevard where the owner was asking that the tree be removed. What Eric does is go out there to see if the tree is diseased or if it's been hit by lightning or something like that, that gives him a reason for that tree to come down, or, you know, it may be that the people are adding on to their house or that their house is suffering damage because of the tree. And even then, depending on the decision, what he does is, he'll take pictures of it and he'll forward those pictures to the Tree Committee to let them know, you know, this was a request we got, I'm issuing the permit, here's the picture of the damage to the tree, this is why I'm going to go ahead and issue this, but just because they're requesting it doesn't always mean that they're going to get a permit to take it down.
And those are, and my guess is those are probably exceptions to the rule. Typically, you don't have that many gorgeous oaks, healthy oaks that people want to remove. The other thing that's mentioned is, over the past couple of years, we've had a lot of trees taken down that were to be mitigated for, and we, we don't have a mitigation trust at the moment, so we don't have any cash. People owe us trees. How are we going to get those trees from them?
Eric has updated that list, and I've assigned him a code enforcement officer to help him work with those projects where the trees did not make it or, or had died, and we're going to be working on that to make sure that those, those trees do go in. Also, I would say that based on one of the comments that was made before, we have no objection to replacing a protected tree with a protected tree, but we have no objection to that.
Okay. The, and the, the other question is, I'm just thinking, and we see this with short-term rentals, the demand on the, you know, unintended consequences. We see the demand on the fire department now with the number of short-term rentals that have to be inspected. You've got another 400 inspections that you have to perform, and that number's growing every year with short-term rentals. Do we have the manpower? I mean, Eric's just one guy, and I know he works hard. I wouldn't want his job, but he's just one guy. How else are we gonna, I mean, if these trees, and you and I discussed this the other day, but just for public consumption. So we collect money from folks who are writing a check to the mitigation trust, and then at some point, we make a decision that we're going to purchase oak trees, we're going to plant them here. Do we get a contractor to do that? Do we get, do we buy a front-end loader and, and a crew to help Eric plant that tree? How, how is that carried out?
Well, we've, we've had that conversation this week, and let me, let me start by saying that Eric is a city arborist, and his primary job responsibility is to make sure that the trees are being taken care of. I mean, that's his number-one priority. So what we discussed is removing some of the other things that he's doing in the department and transferring those responsibilities over to someone else. Now, if he's working on his primary responsibility and he's doing what he's supposed to be doing, and we still see that he's a little bit overwhelmed, then I'll talk to the mayor about maybe getting some help or maybe helping to assign some, some help from the department to him. But for right now, I think that with what is happening with the tree ordinance, I think that we're adequately staffed with maybe the help of one code enforcement officer.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Gaines, I may have a question later, but, let's see. Mr. Gaines?
Yeah, Ms. Barrett answered all my questions.
Thank you. Any other comments or concerns about the proposed revisions to the tree ordinance? Mr. Lawrence?
Your microphone's not on, Mr. Lawrence.
There you go.
I said, you want to amend the thing about the residential? You want to amend it to what?
Yes, sir. We can do that. What we would do, if the council is in agreement with this, we would go back and, and put in those recommendations that we're talking about today, including the residential, and bring it back to the council, bring a clean copy back to the council and let y'all look at it and see if you agree with it.
I'd like to ask the question, taking down a tree, I can see where you ought to mitigate. Trees that are dying, is the same thing?
Trees that are down?
Dying, no, dying.
Dying?
Being from Katrina, lavallos, that hurricanes that eat them up. So if they dying, would it just stop when they die, not they just want to remove it? They have more property. If they dying, is they...
You're talking, you're talking about a tree in someone's backyard and it's just dying. They would call, if it's a protected tree...
I know, I said, what, you're going to mitigate that too? If I'm asked, you have to mitigate that one? I can see when somebody just want to make a bigger driveway, take down trees, but when a tree dying, what's the case there?
Oh, it's Peter. We can incorporate that if the council, if that's what you would like to see happen in the ordinance. You know, the question that a while ago about what can we do for a residential person that want to go remove a tree in their backyard? How could we mitigate that? Well, one of the things might be that we raise the tree removal permit fee that would offset the cost of two trees going back in either there or somewhere else. So there's some options here that we can consider.
I think one option is you use your, your trust to replace that for, you know, no fault of the owner of the, you know, you may have a room to put, mitigate it through the land, to the tree trust.
Yes, sir.
Anything else, Mr. Lawrence?
So do we, do we table this, to table this, allow them to take it back, revise it, and implement all the changes?
Personally, I think that would be the best thing to do, because we've talked about a number of revisions, and to see that in print, perhaps have it, our next meeting, I think, is Tuesday night, February 2nd, which is next Tuesday night. Is it the first? Okay. So at this point, I'll entertain a motion to table, table this for a week?
Yes. I'll second that.
As a motion, as a motion by Mr. Barrett to table it for a week?
I'll second it.
And that's a motion by Mr. Barrett, and a second by Mr. Gaines.
Now, would the council, would the council like for us to incorporate residential into this? I'm talking about one property owner that owns one single-family house. Do we want to incorporate mitigation into that? Because we want to come back with a clean copy.
I would, no, I, I agree. I would like to see that in there, just to see what's proposed and how that's worded, and, and basically determine what the ratio is and what the cost might be and so forth.
Sorry. Two versions. Okay, we'll do one with and one without, and bring it back to the council.
And I know we had a couple of other amendments discussed, and I think you had proposed to compromise on the, the mitigation ratio and so forth. So that way, we'd come to us clean next week, we'd all be looking at the same thing. We may tweak it further then, but at least it'd give you time to revise that so we know exactly what's proposed.
That's fine. Thank you.
All right, any other discussion on tabling this for a week? There being none, all in favor? That's approved on a six-oh vote. All right, that brings us to item 4D. If the clerk would read this resolution, please.
Resolution denying a request for zoning map amendment to authorize a change in zoning district classification for two properties identified as 133 Briarfield Avenue and also an unaddressed parcel situated directly behind 145 Briarfield Avenue.
I'll entertain a motion to deny. I'll make that motion.
Second.
There's a second by Mr. Lawrence. Discussion, I'll reserve my comments. I'd like to hear some discussion from some of my colleagues up here. Mr. Lawrence, any comments or questions?
Been before us a couple of different times, and always seem to be denied by the Planning Commission. They talk about there's no change of character in the neighborhood, you know, these things are not needed. So what's the difference they have on the table now than it was before? It's the exact same thing. I'd say it was, I'm asking you. I said it's in your words, correct?
That's correct, and I'm, I'm not in favor of this proposal. I favor denying it, and when we, you may recall that this developer built, I think it was a 30, 30-unit complex on Briarfield, and it was probably within about six weeks of opening, maybe less than that, and went for a conditional use and got a conditional use, and now that apartment complex is, as I understand it, all those units qualify as short-term rentals. And this is a small neighborhood, and I was against it at that time. It also has an RV park. It has a land that's currently zoned. In some instances, it was zone CB. Some of the, I don't know if there's any left in that neighborhood, but there's a lot of RM30, which is what it's currently zoned. The developer can put up, I think it's about two acres, he could put up 60 apartments there. I think he's proposing 48, and I know that the Planning Commission and the community development had some concerns about apartment complexes as short-term rentals. Simply, I think the, the description was that it's a hotel without being called a hotel, and there are concerns about the types of construction. It's built to residential standards, currently apartments, and then you end up using it as a commercial enterprise, and the feeling now is that it needs to be constructed to commercial standards. But there are plenty of short-term rentals in the area. I don't, personally, I don't think, and I know the neighbors have expressed to me that they do not want any more short-term rentals in the area. So that's my position. I welcome any other comments of council members.
I have a question. What was the, the vote, the Planning Commission vote on this? I know they moved to deny. I was just wanting to know the...
It was seven to five.
Okay.
And that was their recommendation to the council was to deny it, the rezoning, as I recall. Any other comments? Any other comments, Mr. Glavin?
No.
Ms. Newman?
Jerry, it was taken off back in 2020. So what did they do different? Why is it just now coming back up?
It was at the owner's request. The owner, the owner had requested, when the planning commission voted to deny this back in October 2020, then it was on the council agenda, but before it came to the council, the developer owner sent a letter requesting that it be removed until a further date. And so only at the end of 2021, did they approach us again and say, we're ready to come back.
What made them ready, though? What, what is the difference?
Well, the, the owner is here, his attorney is here. I could let them speak to that and.
Please.
And tell you. Okay.
Russell Gill. Let me say this. This application is premised on changing this from RM 30 to CB, community business. And if the application is granted, the units shall be built to hotel standards and requirements. So from a standpoint of the quality of construction and compliance with the code, if this application is granted, they will be built to, to community business standards. Now, why are we here? We're here because there's been a change in the character of the neighborhood. And hopefully you all got the packages that we submitted. I still want to submit a final report from my architect expert, Mr. Liebertard. But I can tell you, from looking at that neighborhood myself, that the character of the neighborhood changed after Katrina has continued to significantly change since then. Much of the area transformed in accordance with tourism, tourism in the area. Mr. Zhang's property is only one block from the beach, is much closer to the beach than much of the surrounding property that is already zoned, commercial business, community business, as far north as the railroad tracks. The majority of the surrounding property is already zoned multifamily or CB. The two properties on the beachfront directly south of Mr. Zhang's property, Motel Six and Surf Style, are zoned CB. And that property, those properties are joined this property. With the exception of a few areas, the properties to the east and west is zoned CB, all the way to the railroad tracks, and in some cases even farther north than railroad tracks. Also, the RV park just to the east of Mr. Zhang's property was rezoned CB. And that's the, that's the same classification we're asking for. And if Mr. Zhang's property were rezoned, it would essentially align with the RV park's property line. And this is shown on the package that we submitted. To the east, the Coliseum is zoned CB, all the way back to the railroad tracks. And to the west, Edgewater property is zoned regional business to the railroad tracks. So this whole area has gone from a residential area more to a commercial area, a community business type area. Rezoning of this property would be an extension of zoning that already exists in accordance with significant changes in the neighborhood. And I, and I'd like to read to you a little bit from the case of Luder versus Hammond. Us lawyers like to quote cases. 529 Southern Second, 625, a 1988 case, an old case. And this is the Supreme Court of State of Mississippi saying this. In the end, this is another of the many cases where in recent years, we have recognized the duty of municipal zoning authorities acting legislatively to quote, "look out the window" and act on the basis of what they see happening in their community. And what's happening in the community in this neighborhood is it's gone commercial, it's gone apartments and hotel. And this service, this is a multimillion dollar investment that Mr. Zhang wants to make in this area. And he's already got a permit lined up to build in that area under RM 30. And he will ultimately build under RM 30 if that's what this council decides. But when you build RM 30, you, you take long-term tenants of all kinds. As, as a mixed development, if you allow him to go to CB and you agree that the, the area has changed, you'll have long-term and short-term people in this 48-unit complex. And it'll be a boon to the city and an improvement of property values. It's not going to, the, the traffic, all of that is not going to change. It's already there. So there's really no reason not to look out the window and allow this. Again, I, I would move to table so I can have my architect expert back this up with a written report. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Gill. Ms. Newman, any other questions or comments?
Yeah, so I guess the readiness of the project, he got a lawyer and an architect to make it motel compliant, correct? Is that what he did? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Newman. Any other comments or questions?
Yeah, I'm.
Mr. Barrett?
Currently, I'm, I'm tending towards voting against this, but I will make a motion to table this until you can submit this report, if the council, if I get a second.
I'll second.
Just so that we can see what, you know, what else you have to offer on this.
Thank you.
So I'll make a motion to table.
I, I agree with Mr. Barrett. I think we need to at least hear it out. So I'll second this.
So there's a motion by Mr. Barrett, a second by Mr. Gaines to table this. How long would we table it for?
How long will it take?
30 days, if you don't mind, sir.
Okay, so let's just say the first week of March.
Which would be March 8th. Okay. All right, any other discussion on tabling?
I want to comment for Mr. Creel. So there was a question earlier that he, someone made a comment that he could build less, to a lesser extent, below what a hotel requires. If we do approve this and it does move to CB, that does require him to, if he does build the structure, to bring it up to hotel standards.
If he intends to do short-term rental there, then that's what we would require is because it would need to meet the fire code and the building code.
All right, so the earlier comment that he would be below those standards is not true. You know, he would be required to bring it up to higher standards.
Yes, sir. And I understand from him that he's willing to, to do that. You know, right now, the property's zoned RM 30. If he were going to do apartments there, he's already zoned for that. He doesn't need a zoning change. But his intention to go to short-term rental is what is on the table today.
Okay. You answered that question. I can support the motion to table it to get more information in.
Another question, Mr. Creel. So if it was built to hotel motel standards there, in addition to the number of units, whatever that is, however many that is, are there any amenities required? Is a manager required to reside onsite at that location? Are there any additional requirements other than just to meet the construction?
Okay.
Commercial construction requirement?
This is, this is a, this is an issue between the ordinance addressing short-term rental and the building code and fire code addressing the construction of the structure. If he, if he builds this to meet the fire code and the building code, then the structure itself would be okay. But the short-term rental ordinance only says that they have to have someone within 30 minutes that can respond in the event that there's some type of an emergency there. So they would not have to have someone on site. We would only hold the construction elements to the building and fire code. Does that make sense?
Yeah. And that's, I just want to be sure I understood that.
Yes, sir.
And I don't know how many stories high this is, but I'm thinking commercial standards would be a specific type of electrical wiring or whatever requirement.
That's correct. Alarm systems, those kind of things.
What about, what about sprinkling? Would it have to be anything two stories or higher would be sprinkled?
It would have to be sprinkled, yes, sir.
All the rooms would have to be sprinkled.
Yes, sir.
Regardless of the height of stories. Okay. All right, any other discussion? The motion to table was made by Mr. Barrett, a second by Mr. Gaines, all in favor of tabling this for 30 days, all opposed. It's approved to table on a five-one vote, and I think we said that's going to be March 8th. So that'll be on the agenda for March 8th. That brings us to item E on the agenda. If the clerk would read that, please.
Resolution granting conditional use approval to authorize an existing single-family residential to be utilized as a short-term rental identified by municipal address of 646 Water Street.
I'll move that.
There's a motion by Mr. Gaines.
Second.
A second, I believe Ms. Newman beat you to it, Mr. Lawrence. Okay, comments, Mr. Gaines?
The ideal spot, so I have no objections.
All right, Ms. Newman, any comments, concerns?
Back the neighborhood. Somebody we built down because it affects the neighborhood and the street. There are short-term rentals on this street, on Water Street.
No, sir. There are no short-term rentals on this section of Water Street right now. What you, what you have is kind of a mix there. On one end of Water Street at Duquette, you've got an apartment building. And then you have Water Street Apartments on the other side of this house that we're talking about, on the east side. And then you have the, the, a couple of single-family houses. And then you have the rectory for the Church of the Redeemer that's still there. So it's, it's kind of a mixed neighborhood. It has commercial, multifamily, all in there together.
You got a little bit of everything on that street, right?
I'm sorry?
You have a little bit of everything on that street.
Yes, sir. It's, it's a mix, yes, sir.
And a, and a Wafa House.
And a Wafa.
Yeah, that's true.
Okay, just checking.
Anything else, Mr. Gaines?
That's it.
Ms. Newman, any comments? Any other comments by the council? If not, we'll call for the question hall in favor of the conditional uses presented. It's approved on a six oh vote. Thank you. That brings us to item F. If the clerk would read that, please.
Resolution granting conditional use approval to authorize the establishment of an auto repair and service facility without painting and bodywork for property identified as 234 Briarfield Drive.
So move.
Some motion by Mr. Gaines.
Second.
Second by Ms. Newman. Mr. Gaines, comments, questions?
Again, I think that they have a tire shop right beside it, so it's pretty much went into commercial area. So that would be a good spot for it.
Okay, Ms. Newman, you have a question? Mr. Lawrence?
As long as you're not messing with the project loans, we all right.
Any other questions? Comments by the council? There being none, all in favor of the resolution for conditional uses presented. That's approved on a six oh vote. That brings us to item G.
Resolution granting, excuse me, resolution to grant preliminary subdivision plat approval for a 40-lot, single-family residential subdivision for a proper property presently identified as two unaddressed parcels fronting north and south upon Yula Street.
I'll make a motion for discussion purposes.
So move. Second.
Second by Mr. Lawrence. Question, this is two parcels totaling about seven acres, 40 lots, somewhere on the north side of Yula Street, somewhere on the south side, most are on the south side of Yula Streets. No plans for short-term rentals. These are going to be townhomes?
That's correct.
And just a brief description of what a townhome is, so, so folks understand exactly what that term means.
Townhomes are individual living spaces. They're single-family, but because they're connected by common boundaries to another residential unit. Essentially what this is, is a single-family subdivision with all the houses connected is what it amounts to. And of course, there are fire code and building code restrictions between each individual unit to make sure that if one burns down, the next one is protected by a firewall. So there are some provisions in there. It is allowed by our ordinance under RM 30 zoning.
Thank you. Jerry, do, and I, I can't recall, I think most of those lots are about 3,000 square feet, give or take, maybe a little less. I think roughly 2,800 square feet to 32 or 3,300. But again, these are all.
Yes, sir.
Touching, they're adjacent to each other. I, I know that we have not heard anything about the proposed road from the community college, which would connect Pass Road. Eventually, it would run north and south all the way down to the entrance to Channel Mark. So this is going to be west of Westview Drive. And last I recall, there were like two phases to that road. One would basically take that road from Pass Road to Yula Street. And, and then the second phase would be from Yula Street down to Runnymede, where Channel Mark is, and the entrance to Cove Drive, that area there. We, we've not really heard anything more from the community college at this point, but I'm, I'm wondering about the traffic. Because if, if that road at some point is built, it would be a private road, I think, unless they want to deed it to the city, in which case, if they meet the construction standards of the road. Yes, sir.
We have a, an MOU that would, that will be on your next agenda, an MOU between us and the college with, where they have agreed to several things, including giving the road to the city so long as it's built to city standards. And also the city agreeing to an intersection on Pass Road, which will be, will have a signal. And the county, the college agreed in that MOU to pay the city share for that signal. So one of the things about Yula Street that we had to get over the hump is, as you, as Jerry knows, normally we would have to have two, two entrances. At, at the, at this moment, there's only one entrance. However, the other is planned and will be built. The entrance off of College Drive.
Right, and that.
Or it's, maybe it's called WC Ford Drive.
I just know that this proposed road has generated some interest when kind of the mention of it has surfaced from time to time. So if it's, it's in my ward, I have a ward meeting scheduled for March 9th, which is a Wednesday. We'll put this topic on that agenda. And hopefully we can have somebody from the community college speak to exactly what they're planning to do or whatever.
Other question.
Mr. Lawrence?
You're talking about 40 houses on seven acres. That's to be roughly about 7,000 square feet per home. Are you saying duplexes or fourplexes or what?
No, sir. These are, these are, each one is an individual, single-family unit that's just attached to another one. It's not a duplex, it's a single-family townhome. And under the, under the ordinance, you're, if you're doing townhomes, you're allowed to go as narrow as 18 feet on your lot sizes. So it's, it's just something we don't see very often, but it is allowed.
And with us on Rainor Street down there, right?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
I mean, it still represents about $6,000, $7,000 square feet per house. It's kind of seven acres.
Two-story, yes, sir.
Forty, forty homes wherever you building there.
Mm-hmm.
Where's all the property going to be at? If you had, you said a house is only 18, 20 feet?
The lot, the lot sizes can be 18 feet wide, yes, sir, for a townhome. It's essentially a zero lightline structure on each, on each side.
I mean, does the 40 don't equate to the 7.24 acres? If it's that small, I mean, you got to have more than 40.
Well, no, sir. What it is, there's a significant amount of wetlands there, and they're working around those wetlands. That's what they're trying to do.
Say it again.
There's a significant amount of wetlands on this big piece of property that they're buying. And so what they're trying to do is to work around those wetlands and only put the structures on the buildable property without getting into the wetlands.
About seven acres of buildable land.
Yes, sir.
Jerry, is it similar to what's right, right around the corner here on?
Yes, Rainor Street, right next to the, the Biloxi Clinic there. You've got townhomes there side by side. This would be very similar to that.
Yeah, but that's not wetland.
Put as many as you can. Ride on wetlands.
So the property not really seven acres, what are they actually building on? How much of the seven acres are they actually building on?
We, well, I mean, we, we take into consideration the entire piece of property that they own and, and what is the buildable area. It, I'm sure it says it on the survey, Mr. Lawrence, but this type is so small, there's no way I'm going to be able to read what it says there. I can get that to you if you want me to.
Just right, the numbers didn't work. That's all it's saying, 40 times seven acres, didn't work.
Question about driveways and backing in and out of traffic, because I suspect if this community college road gets built, that you're going to see a lot of traffic coming through there to get the front of the community college. My understanding is the road's primary purpose is to move. My understanding is the road's primary purpose is to move traffic from their, I guess, fine arts, technology building that the auditorium that they recently built to get it up to Pass Road and...
Yes, sir.
Still needs to be a traffic study. We're not talking about this thing being built in the next month or so. We're a little ways from that.
And this is something, this is something that's going to require approval by the City Council, because if that road goes in, it's going to create a subdivision of property, because it's going to be splitting lots within that area on either side of the road. So it is something that will go to planning commission and come to City Council.
Okay. But in terms of getting in and out of your town home, but there are no restrictions about backing into traffic or anything?
It's just like any other single-family house. Cars back out of a single-family residence out into the road, it works the same way here.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? If not, I'll call for the question. All in favor? And they're not opposed, thank you. It's approved on a 6-0 vote for the clerk. That brings us to consent agenda. There's a motion by Mr. Lawrence, a second by Mr. Guines. Let me start with Mr. Barrett, see if he has any questions about the consent agenda items, any items. Mr. Glavine, you want me to come back to you? All right, I have none. Ms. Newman, any questions on the consent agenda? Mr. Guines? Wait just a moment, Mr. Lawrence, and see if Mr. Guines got any questions.
I'm fine, I'm fine.
You're good. Mr. Lawrence?
I'll look it up, okay.
And I, India. We, how far along are we on that, the traffic study with Neil Shaffman? I see you're doing an additional payment, so...
That was just...
Do you have any update?
That'll be the final payment. That'll be the final payment. The traffic study's been completed and put on the shelf.
So we finished what we're looking for? Everything done?
And, and we're finishing, at the same time, we're finishing the Point Cadet traffic study as well. The two, those are the two traffic studies. Ask me about L.
On M, this is something related to the Friends of Firefighters. What does that mean in assistance to employment?
Yes, sir. So we, we received a grant from the federal government that we're really kind of a pilot program. It allows us, it's given us funding to partner with Friends of Firefighters out of the Bronx and up in New York, where our firefighters, if they go and experience a rough call, you know, something traumatic on duty, they don't have to come to us as a, as an administration. They will have an outlet to where they can reach out, and it's retired firefighters and people that know the job and know the experience that they may be dealing with. And that way, they don't have to, you know, necessarily come through the administration. It's a, it's a program that Michelle Crowley, if y'all remember her, she retired, and Chief Boni had, had kind of pitched back about a year ago, and this Friends of Firefighters is who they partnered up with that should be able to, to help us out. We're still trying to iron out the details, because like I said, it's never been, never been done before in the nation. So we're kind of the pilot program to, to see how it goes.
Is any expense in the city?
No, sir, other than the 10% cost match. There is the 10% cost match when you get awarded the grant, but other than that, no, sir. Everything's fully funded.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Guines, anything? Are we done? Anybody? Mr. Glavine, anything? All right, we'll call for the question on the consent agenda. All in favor as presented? It's approved on a 6-0 vote, thank you. That brings us to code enforcement. Mr. Creel, thank you, sir. At this time, we'll open a hearing concerning 251 Lemieux Street, Say May LLC, 251 Lemieux Street.
This property is still in violation.
Is there anybody here with an interest in 251 Lemieux Street or Say May LLC that wishes to speak? There being none, this hearing is closed. That will bring us to the next hearing, item B. Tisha D. Underwood, and the property is 284 Dewey Circle.
This property's still in violation.
Is there anyone here with an interest in 284 Dewey Circle? Or is Tisha D. Underwood or anyone speaking in her behalf here to speak on this matter? Yes, sir, if you'd come forward to the desk, and if you would, just state your name.
My name's Anthony Cheskovik.
Hey, Anthony, how are you?
I'm good, Mr. Tizzo. I have all the paperwork here that she asked me to bring. We have been cleaning up the yard, working on the cars. One of my, the truck, the owner of the truck, he is overseas right now. And, yeah. We're currently working on everything. We're still on a waiting list for funds to get everything fixed.
Has there, has there been some progress made, Mr. Creel?
They have done some cleaning up around the property, yes, sir.
Okay, and if you were to be granted an extension, Mr. Cheskovik, would you need a, could you get it done in 30 days?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so you'd like a 30-day extension?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I don't know who's...
I'll second it.
All right, so there's a motion by Mr. Lawrence, and a second by Mr. Guines for a 30-day extension. All in favor? It's approved on a 6-0 vote. Mr. Cheskovik, you have 30 days. Keep working hard, get it cleaned up, okay?
Yes, sir.
Good to see you, son.
Good to see you, too.
All right, that brings us to the next item. Mr. Creel, Jill Rouse Zacharias, and the property is 255 Lemieux Street.
This one is still in violation, but I would ask for a 30-day extension. This is an elderly couple. They are working to clean it up, it's just taking a little bit more time.
I move it.
I'll second it.
There's a motion by Mr. Lawrence, and a second by Mr. Guines. Any discussion? All in favor of a 30-day extension? It's approved on a 6-0 vote, thank you. That bring, this, this hearing is closed. That brings us to the next hearing, item D. The property is 2063 Stonebridge Drive, Charles Pinkston. Mr. Creel?
This property is still in violation. Councilman Dimming contacted me last night and asked if we would be agreeable to one more 30-day extension. They have done some work, it's been very minimal, but I would think that if we give them one more, that this needs to be the last one.
It's 30 days and up, Jerry?
30 days, yes, sir.
Motion?
I'll make a motion.
All right, I heard a motion by Mr. Lawrence. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Newman. Any more discussion? All in favor of a 30-day extension? That's approved on a 6-0 vote, thank you. That brings us to the routine agenda. There's a motion by Mr. Lawrence, and a second by Mr. Barrett.
We got anything coming in? Any envelopes coming in, a little check to the mail?
Soon, soon. I believe last time I was here, council, I reported that Mema and the Horn Group was working on about 1.5, 1.58 million. Since then, we had some additional invoices and costs that went to Mema. So we're looking for the next tranche of money to actually be 1.914 million. I was communicating with them while I was in here, and it should go to Mema next week, and then from there into our system. So in February, we'll have a, a good reimbursement and advancement from our state partners.
1.9 is additional to the 1.5?
No, sir.
It's total?
Yes, sir.
Total would be 1.9?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Any other questions or concerns by the council on the routine agenda? Call for the question. All in favor of the routine agenda is presented. It's approved on a 6-0 vote. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'd like, I'd like to make a motion, but I'd like to make it in memory of Marcella Grace Kavasovich, who passed away. She's one of the well-known Kavasovich families, and she was very graceful herself, pardon the, you know, the pun to her name, but I'd like to make that motion today.
All right, we'll second that by the entire council. All right. Thank you, Mr. Glavine. All in favor of adjourned? That's approved on a 6-0 vote. That concludes today's meeting. The next meeting will be Tuesday night at 6:00. Thank you.